Our next topic for discussion is selection process for the new vice principal positions. As you know, Dr. Rossi, as part of our consent agenda, resigned. We've accepted his resignation. So the position of high school principal is currently open. So we're going to get to Dr. Pascarella on this part, on the principal position process. Dr. Pascarella?
I'm feeling deja vu. I've been hearing about this. You know, this happened quite suddenly in terms of notification. It may have been happening over time in Dr. Rossi's mind, but whatever. He was gone and went to position of the Turnstile High School again, which I think is really problematic as a parent indicated, I mean, three principals in four years, wasn't it?
Yes.
You know, so here's, we talked, Bill and I talked about this along with the cabinet. And I've gotten emails and phone calls from parents and crew staff. Stability is key. I think, was that what we talked about before? So I'm trying to think about the needs of the kids, not in terms of the needs of the adults in this one. But in fact, the adults work here and they need, you know, they need to come together. So we're looking at both. So when we're looking at this, I was trying to come up with something that would work for us in terms of the high school youngsters and for stability. We're going to have to move to an interim. Moving to an interim is a board behind your policies is my right to appoint. Whenever we go out and recruit a new principal, the board has established policy in there, which has just been updated, which is pretty inclusive now in terms of those parents and teachers are involved in it to be part of that process. We think that's a strong process. But I'm asking myself, is that what we need to do at this time? So what I propose to the board to consider, and this may be, the timing may be difficult for you, is to, is to consider that we select principal at the high school, the next principal in the high school as an interim, someone who's been there and someone has the, has gone with the respect of the teachers and students and who loves Danbury, is part of, is a Danbarian, and someone who wants the best for our youngsters up there. And you consider selecting Gary Pacaccio as that person. And in thinking about the timing, if we were to select Gary and turn around and start recruiting in springtime for principal, yes, it's doable, no question. The principalship for the secondary high school is a shortage area. We've been through this once before. There are many interim principals, Stanford, Venge, around. What I say to you to consider seriously is to think about creating interim. And I define interim with an end game in mind. To consider assigning, make this a two-year assignment for Gary, that he be the person in charge for two years. At the end of two years, Gary will not be working for Danbury any longer. He will probably retire or something else, but he would not, not be the principal and he'll be gone. It does a few things for us. The, his, he is probably an assistant. We would then hire permanent assistant assistants, assistant in his place and not an interim. That's what it would be if we assigned Gary as a, as an interim. I know, you know, I've thought about this long and you have, you're hearing it for the first time. Two-year thing is quite different. We haven't done it in the past. But when you start counting the number of principals and putting, putting them in there for the youngsters, is it, is it that important that we put one person in there and then go out and find someone? Or if we have someone who has the acumen to be the leader, knows the committee, knows the kids, we are in a different place than we were three years ago regarding our programming. We have a good plan. We have an associate that's working on the instructional piece. We have the department chairman. You know, I ask you to consider that, to really think about, is that, is that something you can do? In my mind, I don't think it'd be a question about Gary. It's whether or not, at least I think, it would be the duration of the assignment. So I don't know if Bill wants to add to that for me?
Yeah. Kim?
It would be like to add to it is that I do think that we've put so many new initiatives in place at the high school. Some were mandated by the state, such as detracking. The idea of the freshman academy, which is already proving to be successful. The idea of putting more rigor to the advisory program. Lisa Cruz is here tonight. She really spearheaded that and it's become more robust over time because of the efforts that have been put into place. The old enrollment for advanced placement. There are a lot of things happening at the high school and I think they need time to mature now. And so it's not a time to add new things next year or the year after. I think it's more time to bring stability to the high school. When Mr. Charham spoke tonight, I think his points were well taken. We have 220 people in the building. It's a pretty big community pulled together. And as John Guest used to say, I can't get any, the entire group of people in this building to agree on what day of the week it is in any given time because there are just so many opinions up there and it's, it's a large place. Gary has a tremendous amount of respect by the faculty. What really punctuated for me was the day that we had that bottom scare. And we were standing on Platform Bridge Road and Lieutenant McNally and I were riding together. And we had gotten out of car and we needed, Gary was there. We needed him to mobilize the troops as as get people to move in a certain place. And he just turned around and said, this is what we need to do. And the entire faculty followed him. They have great respect for him. Any concerns in terms of typically we have an assistant principal. Their job is mostly managerial. So what happens with the whole instructional leadership piece? We brought Megan in for that very reason and created the associate principal for instruction. So that's solidified now. So the idea of keeping this in place for a couple of years, bringing stability, bringing tranquility. And lastly, it's healthy for an organization to bring in blood from the outside and blood from the inside. If you look at all the appointments for departmental positions, they were all in the term. Many of the administrative positions for the consolidation were all in the term. We brought a few people in next term. I think it's a good time to go back to taking a well-known commodity, bringing stability. Gary, I think, can hit the road running in a way that will immediately guard and support the faculty and have people turn around and say, we're behind him. We recognize there's a challenge here. Are you with me? And I can tell by the shakes of the hands in the audience that that will be the case. So I strongly endorse what Sam said. We think it's the right person at the right time, good time.
I guess from my piece, I'd like to layer on the human resources perspective. It is no mystery that there are a lot of openings around the state in some fairly senior level places. And lots of districts have turned to interim appointments, particularly the secondary level as people are searching for the right qualified candidates. And, you know, I wasn't here when Dr. Rossi came in. You know, you all have quite an extensive search. And I think that at best you're looking at a fairly lengthy process trying to find the right person to fill all of these needs. And so when we have talked about the one-year or two-year would agree to Dr. Pascarella, it's going to take you some time to find not only the qualifications and the criteria and to solicit opinions from other folks, particularly at the high school, but also to now conduct that search. The, the policy that Dr. Pascarella will refer to in terms of our reviewing candidates is the one that we updated this year. And it requires a multi-level process where there are several panels involved. We will also be required to, and I think it's good, of course, to involve the student governance council.
School of Governance Council.
I'm sorry, School of Governance Council in order to solicit their opinion. It's required. But I think it's a good policy. I think that those are folks who've been elected up there to be on that council and they will be involved in the process as well. So we have a fair amount of coordinating to do and coupled with a pool that is uncertain. I think that my best advice would continue would be to take your time here. And that's why I would agree with Dr. Pascarella on the two-year recognition.
And what about the comment about the interim? I'm sorry, the interim.
In terms of the school.
The interim criteria is how do you, how would you define that?
Certainly, one of the things we've talked about is there are all different kinds of ways that we could structure it so that at the end of that period of time, whoever it is that's fulfilling that position as the interim may step down. I know you all have had discussions in the past about whether the interim can serve in the position in the future. I don't think you would run into that in this particular situation because of Mr. Pacaccio's long tenure. I think that's not going to be an issue here. But there certainly are ways for us to have that conversation as well. So I'm not concerned about that piece at all. I, I think that if your concern is, you know, whether that person will want to stay in the pool or not, I think that's not a factor here. But I think that the interim piece makes sense right now because it's one where we've all looked to those people who've got the experience in the building. And as both administrators have talked, you have to have governed the respect of the faculty. And I think that's a really significant piece of, of this puzzle.
Mrs. Malero.
I think it's a very good choice. I think Gary Pacaccio will make a great leader for us in the interim. But I would like to ask this board to take its time also in picking our next principal. And it may take two years, but I think we should do an investigation because we need to know the climate of that building and we need to know before we hire another person what, what really the problems are, why we have so many principals in such a short time. I mean, we've hired women, we've hired men, we've hired inside, we've hired outside. And it's still to know them. So in my opinion, there's something wrong with the climate there that we need to investigate and get to the bottom of and know what the problem is before we hire another person and certainly not set them up to fit. And I think it's something that we should discuss in the executive session.
Mrs. Malero, any further discussion? Mr. Taddeusen.
I have great respect for Mr. Pacaccio. And I think he would be an excellent selection as an interim. My problem that I have is I can't, my whole experience, I can't think of giving an interim for someone for a year. To me, an interim, you make the search and the person's an interim and you find someone, a person takes the job, produces a year and finds them. I would have no problem saying an interim and then if you needed to extend it, because you didn't find somebody within a year, but saying flat out two years, I'm, I'm just, to me, it seems like everything we can down the road, I'll be honest with you. And a very good person, I think, personally, an excellent person. But the fact that, like I say, I just, two, I'll be going to two years. Why don't I give three years? Then you might, you know, are we finally picking a principal or not? This is my thoughts right now, but like I said, this is nothing personal because I really think the man would be excellent as, as an interim.
Dr. Pascarella?
I know, my own response is that they're unusual. This is not unusual. I think you just coincided. There are many issues there. You've tried insiders, outsiders. You, Bob, you have, you've lived up there, you were a principal up there. I think I had to come down on the two years blind because I, I felt that that was the stability that we needed. And I knew that the person who I was interested in, who could do it for us, was going to retire, to be honest with you. And I thought that was kind of like, I, I, like a light went on in my head. Would that, would that time help us get to the point, understand the next person, need a consultant come in and do an audit? And then give us stability for the faculty that's got a known factor. He's a good educated person. He will bring us through this. You know, I almost say, you know, if he went through the process, he might be the person we choose. I don't want to go through that turmoil. I don't think we're ready to. I think you have someone, a very good quality person, keep him for two years. Let him be your leader. Let him be the guy that brings us through there. And, you know, and we make a different kind of decision in a very different situation. This is not normal. This just is not normal. I hate, I pride myself on secondary and have two principals leave in three years. I personally feel pretty, pretty damn low about it. My fault, no doubt, you know? And I see that and I have to take that. But I think that this man would give us stability. I think that's what we need personally.
Mr. Fazian?
I'm going to call on Mr. Malero. I, I think this buys us sufficient amount of time to uncover any issues that may be there that we've been overlooking when we're going to opt to hire a new principal. I think to set up another principal in a position where it's a no-win situation for that person may come in and may go through similar sets of circumstances. And I don't know what those circumstances may be, but I think we need to kind of start digging into this. And I think the two-year period is the time to begin doing it with all the other issues we've got going on. We need to find out how our enrollment issues are going to be dealt with and has a more pressing problem right at the moment. So how many, how many of these pressing problems can we keep up in the air at one time? So I think the two years provides the time to do it in a way that we can get to the bottom of what the problem is, if there is a problem. We don't know that there isn't, but we hear anecdotal reports around of different things going on. We need to dig into that as a board. So I totally encourage Mr. Malero.
Thank you, Mr. Fazian. One question I would have from maybe Ms. Johnson is, is there any precedent for this? I know that there isn't in this district, but have we looked to other districts to see in terms of interim who's lasting more than a year? That's, that's, you know?
I think we can tie that off the top of my head. But I will say that this is a very unusual situation. There has been such a high turnover. And I dare say there isn't anybody that's been in that situation. So you're facing a little bit different problem than others.
I appreciate that. Mrs. Kupfer?
Mr. Chairman, I've heard the discussion. I have no fun with having Mr. Pacaccio, who I have great respect for. And I'm quite sure from what I've seen in all the graduations that I have attended and been on the board for 20 years, the respect that the people have to know. But I also think that we have a job, okay? I would support him being in that position for one year. I don't see anything wrong with us giving direction to our superintendent and our personnel person to say, let's start the process looking for a new principal. And if he decides that he wants to be in that pool, so be it. We just can't say, well, there might not be anybody out there. It might take six months and, and blah, 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 okay? We have a process that's in place as far as hiring a new principal. And also hearing someone say, well, we should have all, you know, these parents over this committee. There was a statement in the, in the paper the other day about parents being on the committee. I have no problem with that, but the committee is made up of a certain number of people. And we have had committee members, we have a diversified high school. And we have had representatives to represent those people at those interviews committee. I will support Mr. Pacaccio taking that position for one year. And in turn, we'll go ahead and look at looking for a new principal. We don't know who's out there who want to come here. Everybody say, no, I'm not going to come to Danbury there because they're our school. Danbury is not the only school that's going through this financial crisis. And I certainly would support that, but I would not support putting anyone in if it passed a pass. I would not support putting anyone in that position for two years. And I think the final straw is we need to find out what's going on. And I certainly think that we need an investigation to really find out what's going on at Danbury High School. And some of the reasons that we have, that people have left, you know, it could have been their own personal reason why they wanted to move that, that we're not privileged to. And I'm sort of upset that this information is brought to us because I think we as a board should have had a better understanding and talking about this in executive board before being brought out to the public like this.
Thank you, Mrs. Kupfer. Mrs. Leal.
I think Gary's a great choice. I think he would be a fantastic leader for Danbury High School. I think that he should be in for two years. I think that it's probably going to take us that long to not only find a qualified candidate, but to fix whatever is wrong up at that school before we bring somebody new. Because if we don't fix what's wrong with that school before we bring in a permanent principal, I can pretty much guarantee you, you're going to have a repeat of the last two principals. And we don't want that.
Thank you, Mrs. Leal. And I approach this, Mrs. Johnson?
I just want to raise one more point is that in talking about this one-year and two-year situation, if you decide to go the route of a one-year appointment, you're going to need to think carefully about whether that assistant principal that fills Mr. Pacaccio's spot is then an interim appointment or a permanent appointment.
Mrs. Kupfer?
Mr. Chairman, as you say, these recommendations would be important to us to make. We should have had some type of overall discussion in executive session about these options. Thank you.
Dr. Pascarella?
Just a point of order, I wouldn't, is that, can you have that kind of conversation in the executive session?
No, executive session needs to be limited to the details of the people that we're talking about, the weak side that we're talking about, these other factors that needs to be held in public session.
Excuse me, but are we talking about a position?
We're talking about a position. One question from Mrs. Johnson. How long, assuming we didn't have to do this.
I can keep calling this.
Too late.
One question per.
How long would it, assuming we didn't have to look at, you know, why things are happening the way they are, what a normal search, again, we lasted this a couple of years ago. How long would a normal search take if we did it the right way with the appropriate number of parties in, what is your time estimate on that?
Well, again, it depends on how the first toss of the net goes. For example, in some positions that we have hosted for quite some time, we haven't had a lot of candidates that we thought met the qualifications to bring in to even talk to. So in the average search, I think in a time when you have a robust pool, would probably take you several months just to figure out what the criteria is that you're looking for to convene. We now have a, we'll have at best a three-level process because we've got a two-level process and this new procedure we put in place. And then we have to fold in the school governance council as well. So we're looking at a multi-tier process as well, which is going to take the better part of probably amongst the coordinate. So I think you're looking at several months anyway. And that's assuming a robust pool of people to look at.
If I can just make a, it could range between four and five months, but what I find, the cities seem to be most difficult recruiting rounds, particularly for those shortage areas. They're highly consult. We've done it on our own. I think the conversation that needs to happen, whatever you do tonight, is really seriously think about these times, even though it's a time year so hard. You bring a consultant in who will do an audit, do interviews, maybe call the ex-principals, really bring the bear from the outside, not an insider. You know, what's the climate, what's the situation so that we can, you know, have a good assessment of it and bring it to the board? That can start once we decide what we're doing.
Yeah.
Mrs. Malero?
I would just have to ask Mrs. Johnson. If a consultant would have the same rights as the board would have to ask for emails to, you know, in school, emails and, would that consultant have the same rights as we would have as board members?
Well, you have to remember too, that there is the Freedom of Information Act. So a lot of things that are out there are in the general public purview anyway. So that consultant would likely have access to everything that you would as well. I don't, you know, it's, it's a tough question about the consultant's ability to solicit information.
Correct.
Whether, you know, waterboarding, you know, okay. Correct. But in my, you know, 14 months here, I mean, it's, it's a big place and it is divided and there's a lot going on and it's hard to get to the bottom of what some issues are. It's very hard. And whether that's best done by an insider or an outsider, I always think that's a jump ball in some respects.
Well, I just want, if we do have that type of audit, I would like them to have rights, you know, to solicit the information. And if we have more rights than an outsider, then it should come to us. But if not, then, you know.
I'm not sure this much that would not be available in the public domain.
Okay.
Mrs. Austin James?
The only question I have here, or comment, I should say most of than a question, is if you're going into a two-year, basically, if you're going into two years, you're limiting yourself. You're going to say, you go out for the search, if you find that person and you still have that time left and that person says, you know what, I can't wait that long, you're going to lose the person. And then on the other hand, okay, what happens if it goes beyond the two years? So put it at number two, how long do you serve? I think it's going to limit us to a point that it's going to tie our hands in either direction. Do we want to be in that position? Because if you have a good person to put in that position and you have this timeline that they have to adhere to because you promised this person, which I understand because he's retired, do we want to put ourselves in that position? Because you could lose a good person that may be criticized at the high school. And on the other hand, with the timeframe that we have, it may go beyond that. So what happens then? So with this timeframe, worried about the timing more so than getting the right person in that position is all we need to do to make sure that person is more successful. I think that's more important than worrying about what time and tying our hands and making sure that we have no say so because we've always already promised the time that this person, and we have to say no to the other person.
My own comment to that is that what I see happening out there, the people that are taking these low, these jobs seem to be others that are trying, a lot of states coming here. And that's happening more and more, so it's not, so the pool may be growing because of the retirement stuff. But the first I would have, if I, if the board would say two years is the thing, I would think that we would make a decision to do the consulting. You'd have to collect the data this year. You would not go out, because I would agree with you otherwise, until next year to do, to do the, the actual recruiting. You put out literature and then you start doing the screening of late fall into spring and then you get ready for the following year. And Gary would be gone. This is not something, at least in my view, would say, okay, I'm going to hire, go through this, hire someone next summer to serve a year from September. If I, if I said that, that was not what I meant at all. Because then you wouldn't have a good candidate, knowing who's going to wait. You're absolutely right. But there seem to be people who are coming from other states, native states, New York being a primary example, and Massachusetts that are, you know, second career in their primary career that's happening. So that pool, and they're able to, to serve during the year. If you take an active sitting person who's a principal, most likely, probably nine times, 99% of the time, they're not going to leave their school or their district until the following year. So if it's going to be a mid-year kind of selection, it won't work. You're absolutely right. So you'd have to commit to that timeline to make it work, to get the best possible candidate in a position for January, July 1st is the following year.
And what I would say is to touch on your point, you know, what I might suggest, I don't know if that works or not, is to say for a period not to exceed two years because the concern that I have, I think it's the same concern, once you get longer than that, we'd be setting a pretty dangerous precedent in that it's the board's responsibility to appoint permanent administrators. And, you know, the longer this would go, or if it's an indefinite period of time, or it shouldn't go longer than two years because we didn't fill the position, you know, the whole process by which we select permanent principals is probably being undermined. So I think we should be careful about what kind of precedent that we're setting with this. But I, I would, I would agree with, I'm fully in favor of Mr. Pacaccio, in favor of two years, but probably for a period not to exceed two years, just to, just for the process reasons. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask a question. And I heard the word thrown around in various conversations yesterday. And we go back to when we bought Dr. Rossi here. And I think the board, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, stop me. if I'm wrong, stopping, we all felt very strong that we hired the right person. Now, what happened to cut this term down to two years? I don't know. And maybe the next process is, when we hired the right principal, is at least asking them in the contract that be at least a minimum of three to five years.
One question I would have is that the terms that we hire the principal under are subject to the collective bargaining with the administrators in? So, is that something that's, what Mrs. Cooper is proposing, is that, is that subject to collective bargaining or is that?
Sure. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
But I, but I, but the conversation of commitment is a key one and I think we did have it and I think that what that would do is solidify it, but I don't think we have the right, as with a superann殊, if you could, you know, it's in the digital contract, you serve at will, but not that position. They serve at the, we could get a verbal and expectation, but we can't get a signature.
Okay. Thank you.
What I might suggest doing as well, because I think I'm fully in favor of Mrs. Malera's suggestion, I think, in terms of running a study and fully understanding the issues with the, with the high school climate, you know, we're removed from that, we're not in the building every day and obviously, we've had many principals come and go over the past ten years and I think it's critical for us to have an understanding of what that is before we proceed further. And I think the details run itself to executive session because that's what we're talking about, personnel issues perhaps. But what I might suggest is appointing an ad hoc committee to coordinate this process because this is a suggestion without any process behind it. So, I would propose appointing an ad hoc committee of three board members to start this idea and make it into, into reality. So, does anyone like, would anyone like to volunteer for that? Mrs. Cooper? Mrs. Malera? And Mr. Janelle? And we will appoint Mr. Janelle as the chair. So, we have an ad hoc from high school climate.
A high school climate or, let me just, I mean, as long as you have a committee working with us, we should come back to the order of recommendation. I don't, I don't feel that I or the board should do surveys and interpret the data. I think we should have this, have a conversation about bringing in a consultant to look at and to do that. I mean, I turned out a study this spring and had information, but this is much more in-depth and you need someone with quite an expert piece.
No, I think, no, I meant, you can determine what the parameters are. I'm not saying what the parameters are, but that should be a subject of the committee and the administration working together to find a timeframe, what is to be done.
Your phone.
So, it's, I'm just saying, just a little, just a second.
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, we need a consensus on principals, on the superintendent's recommendation for Mr. Pacaccio as interim, as the interim principal at Danbury High School for a period not to exceed two years. Mrs. Rossin, James.
See, my problem is when you say not to exceed two years, it can be less than two years. You're not, is it definitely two years?
Mrs. Lee.
Maybe you should just do it and each person says for how long they want. Yeah, like I would say, yes, Gary, for two. And I would do that with him.
Mrs. Cooper.
No, I know why.
Okay. If you have, if you have an alternative, please tell me when you have those.
Well, I don't, I'm in favor of Gary, but I would say, I wouldn't say definitely two years, I would say as needed until we find.
Open and, right. Who we find. Mrs. Lee.
Gary for two.
Mrs. McCray. Gary for two.
I know that will work.
I'm in favor of Gary for two years. Mr. Janelle?
Two years.
I'd like it open, go for a year and if more need it, so I have to find someone, so I'm slow. I'd recommend that.
Okay. Mrs. Cooper, on you. Mr. Fazian, two years. That's what I'm asking. Or Miss Johnson, it's not the board. So, we have a majority, we have a consensus, a majority for Gary Pacaccio for two years, we have one year, one for one year and two for open, so we have consensus.
And you've already won, I know how hard this was to the board, I know how much you wanted the success of this, as personal to be, and I, I think it's the right move in terms of the person and of the study and I hope we walk away with a, a bad situation in two years. So, thank you very much for your support.
Mr. Janelle, closing comments?
I have a question for you. In addition to all of our problems, we have an added new feature this year, and that's the governance council. Although, from what I understand, they don't really have any obligation or right in what we're deciding now or this process, but from a teamwork, or the coming, in a way to engage them in this, is this something that the committee should think in engaging a member of the governance council as part of our deliberation process to say that this is what we feel of the problems or, not that we know the problems, but this is what we're looking to, to resolve and have a member of that committee sort of join us and report?
Join your ad hoc committee, do you think?
Yes.
I, I think that there is lots that is unclear about what the parameters of the school governance council are. What is clear is that it's unclear. So, I agree that I think as a matter of setting the tone, that absolutely, that these are people who were elected because they have a connection to the school, because they have a lot of information, because they're committed, because they're passionate. So, I think that in terms of setting the tone, it's a good idea. Asking legally, there is no obligation and I think that's really where judgment comes in as members of the board.
Because my feeling is in the interest of working together and having harmony and that's the purpose of having this particular council, that I would look forward to, you know, inviting them to be part of our ad hoc and, and, you know, going through the problems and the challenges so that they will, you know, we can discuss this later on in, with the committee on this.
What will happen now, just so you know, tomorrow, I asked the school governance council to come together. I didn't tell them who it was. I didn't know what we were going to decide to meet the interim, because I knew we had the interim, I didn't know how long. So, there's a meeting at 2:00 to sit and talk with Gary without the individuals. We are going to be posting the assistant principal job as permanent. The law says principal and other administrators, so they're going to participate. We're going to use the new board policy with the school governance council and parents in that in the selection of the assistant principal, correct?
Correct.
And then I think at ad hoc, we would have talked about how to reach out because they are, they have to be a part of it, along with faculty and others.
Mr. Fazian.
I just want to point out, my tenure on the board of 16 years, it is a privilege of the chair of that committee, the ad hoc committee, to conduct the business of the committee in any way he sees fit. So, if you feel that it's necessary to involve that particular group and how you involve them is totally up to your prerogative as chair of the committee. At least that's been my understanding of the way the departmental procedure works here. So, if you're the chair, I think it's all about your business, the way you need to do to get to where you want to go, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. And I think by statute, the school governance council must, or that's one of their responsibilities, is to conduct interviews of candidates for administrative positions at the high school. So, I guess that has to be worked out as a separate interview apart from the committee the district puts together.
It's unclear and I've done a lot of reading about it and I think that what is clear is that they need to be involved in the interview process for the principal. It's just unclear how we fold that into the policy that we've crafted and updated this year. And I think it's, I think it's certainly doable if there's a way to do it, we just need to have a conversation about how to fold them together.
Because I think in reading the material I said in my, when I'm, school governance council, it's the governance council after their interview needs to report to the superintendent and the board of their findings as well. So, it's just another viewpoint that we need to take into consideration. Mr. Janelle?
But they had no, I would say jurisdiction, no authority to sit in on any interview relative to the appointment during the interim.
That wasn't clear at all.
I think that was what they were trying to ensure.
Right.
There's no, that was our goal. And that's why I say, in terms of this council being brand new, if you want it to work, we should look at spirit, working together in a norm to, you know, to extend to the conditions where collectively, you know, effective and be further better for the school.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So, then we'll move on to our fourth discussion.